Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education.
The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act have been complied within that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least 48 hours in advance on March 23rd, 2015. Notice was mailed to the Coria Post and Aldea. Notice was also posted on the bulletin board located by the reception desk at the central office and all school building bulletin boards within the district. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. Dorothy Burley. Ms. Barbara Coscarello. Ms. Taisha Manier. Mr. Minister Mohammed.
Present.
Mrs. Felicia Reyes Morton.
Here.
Mrs. Martha Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Catherine Blackshire.
Present. Can I get a pledge to the flag? I'd like to turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Okay, so as we normally do, I'm going to come down and make the presentation so All right, good evening, everyone. So I'm going to do my best to walk through the presentation. For those of you seated in the back that can't see the slides as well, so that you don't have to necessarily see every last word, but if you would like to move up, there are of course, as you can see, plenty of seats here up front, to the extent anyone wants to move a little bit closer. So I want to begin today's board meeting by sharing some sad news, some unfortunate news. I think some of you all here in the North Camden community have already heard this, but a dear colleague of ours, community school coordinator at the Molina School, Evelyn Pagan, recently passed away. It was unexpected. Ms. Pagan was with the district for 42 years, and she's someone that left a mark on me. She's somebody that every single time I saw her would give me a giant bear hug and talk about the wonderful things that were happening in Molina School, and clearly, anyone and everyone who's come across her path will tell you the same thing. She had a generosity, a spirit about her, and she was a wonderful, wonderful advocate for our children, our families in the city of Camden. So she will be dearly missed, and I just want to express my deepest sympathies to all those who knew Ms. Pagan. So we're going to kick off today's meeting by discussing the recent announcements that were made here last week, and I think just about every last person in this room has heard these announcements. These announcements were made fundamentally to address our schools that we believe needed the most help in order to revitalize school buildings, in order to raise the bar academically for our kids. And so I'm going to walk you through each of those decisions, school by school, and then we'll get into our usual set of announcements. So I'll begin right here at Pine Point. So at Pine Point, last year, we had made the decision to phase out Pine Point. So today, the district school in this school building, Pine Point Middle School, serves grades seven and eight. And at the end of this school year, Gary, we're going to put this online, so you can have the full presentation, so you don't have to take pictures. At the end of this school year, Pine Point will phase out, and the organization remaining will be the Mastery School. Mastery currently K-5 will be K-6 next year. Mastery School, as you all have heard, but just as a reminder, is eventually going to move to a new facility that was recently approved by the Camden Redevelopment Agency on State and River. So it will be a K-6 next year, and then potentially at the end of next school year, or whenever the construction is completed, it could take a little while longer, that will be their long-term home. So what that will mean is that this building, potentially as early as 2016, '17, or 2017, '18, will be unoccupied. So between now and then, and certainly over the next several weeks, we're going to prioritize the conversation about how we will utilize this building. This building has good bones, it certainly needs a little bit of support, but the building has a lot of history, as you can see, it's a beautiful auditorium, and we want to think about how best to repurpose this building. I can tell you now, what I've shared in other public meetings, a lot of families have come to us saying that they would, here in North Camden, have told us that they would love to see a high school in North Camden, and that a lot of families here don't always feel comfortable sending their students from the North Camden community all the way across town to some of the other high school options. So that is an idea that we are going to explore in some more detail. So the announcements that we made were initiated as a part of a series of town halls, but really over the last 18 months, about how we can address our schools that have been struggling the most with facilities issues, with academic performance, and with declining enrollment. And so we laid out three potential paths: continuing the Camden commitment and our strategic plan efforts, that's happening at all of our schools; partnering with Renaissance Schools, that was the announcement last week; and third, expanding the NJECA/CEA Priority School partnership. We're pleased with the partnership we have currently in five or six schools, I believe, and we are looking to further expand that partnership into more schools next year. So the decisions were made fundamentally based upon, in addition to all the listening and learning, but the decisions were really made based upon looking at the data. And what we looked at was academic data, but not just proficiency. We looked at growth, so how schools were doing as far as students that were coming in with similar proficiency levels, but were they advancing those students? Secondly, we were looking at parent choice information, as far as which schools we've seen trends in terms of decline in enrollment over time. And then third, we were looking at the condition of the facilities, and knowing that some of our buildings are in disrepair and require tens of millions of dollars in order to renovate. So I'm just going to, again, walk you through each of those decisions, school by school. This is just a reminder that in terms of the partnership, and why we believe Renaissance Schools will be a good outcome for us, is that they're very unique. They are public neighborhood schools that are partnered with the school district to deliver programs that align to the community's needs, so families will have a lot of say in terms of what ends up happening at these schools. And then third, they come with additional funds, unlike traditional charter schools, to renovate existing buildings or build new buildings from the ground up. So at the Molina School, Molina will be partnering with Mastery. All students in the building will have the right to remain there. They can certainly choose to go to other nearby schools if they would like. And Mastery, alongside the district, will work with the families to determine what programs will be made available, to determine what renovations will happen at the building. Clearly, we've heard from so many Molina families that the annex at the Molina School is in true disrepair. It is the oldest building in this entire school district, constructed in 1904. So one potential outcome is that Mastery gets rid of the annex and adds additional capacity to the Molina School, and potentially also adds a gym or an auditorium, because Molina currently has one room that serves as the cafeteria, the auditorium, and the gym. And so, great opportunities for the Molina community, but the families will have a huge say there. McGraw East Camden Middle, very similar with both schools. All families and students will have the right to remain or elect to go, and have the choice to go to other schools nearby. And again, we will use our partnership to significantly renovate both buildings. East Camden in particular has had a lot of issues with HVAC, especially this past winter. We had a ton of problems with the heating. It's also a building that just doesn't have enough windows, and I believe there's a lot we can do through this partnership to renovate those buildings. At Bonzel, again, just like the other schools, all kids will have, and families will have the right to remain inside the school building. Our partnership is with the Uncommon Schools Organization, which is like the other Renaissance School Partners, a nonprofit, and the school here is called Camden Prep. And so Camden Prep will open up as a K-4 in Bonzel. It will be a co-location, similar to that here in Pine Point, and Bonzel will remain a 5 to 8, and each year, the K-4, Camden Prep, will grow until it serves 5 to 8, and the Bonzel School will then phase out. And again, significant renovations to the Bonzel School through the partnership with Camden Prep. And then lastly, at the Whittier School, Whittier is the most unique out of the five for a few reasons. First, the Whittier School is arguably the building with the most concerns in terms of the quality of the facility. It's the second oldest building after the annex of Molina. The Whittier School was constructed in 1910, and the front steps are now condemned. They have been condemned for quite some time. If you ever walk by the building, they're wrapped in caution tape, and there have just been one issue after another inside that facility, and we believe that it is time to retire that building. Now, we would not make a decision like that unless we knew that the students and families had an option that was of higher quality in terms of the facility, but also one that was still in the neighborhood. And what we've been able to provide here is that the Kip Cooper Norcross Academy, which happens to be a school that the majority of the Whittier kids actually live closer to, because a lot of those kids live in Landing Square, a lot of those families reside in Landing Square, after Landing Square School was closed 10 to 12 years ago, and then were moved over to Whittier. So many of them will be moving back to their home community into a brand-new building. And so, to the extent that any busing needs are there, we're going to make sure to meet them alongside the Kip School, and you know, this is a very unique situation. The guiding principle in all of this has been, "A great neighborhood school in every neighborhood." We didn't close schools just to close budgets here. We made these decisions fundamentally because we believe that our community will benefit from higher-quality facilities and a better academic experience. As I've been stating all along, this is not to point the finger, this is not to say that any one person is responsible, any one group of individuals are responsible. This is a systemic failure. This is not to do with anything that any, again, individual, teacher, principal, support staff, and any of these five schools are responsible for. And I want to make that point as clear as the day is long. I've sat with the staff, I've told them that exact same message, that they did not put us in this position. We're talking about decades of challenges that we have inherited here in Camden. And for us, we need to move with a sense of urgency and make these decisions in order to improve outcomes and to make sure that our city is in a position to be successful, because one out of three residents in Camden today is under the age of 18. So the future of this city rests with our students, and we believe that these decisions will benefit our students and our families. And so, I just wanted to make sure, again, to quickly recap those decisions for anyone that may have not heard them last week. So moving forward with our regular set of updates, the Camden City School District, we're pleased to say that with these difficult decisions, we're working very, very hard to make sure that we're properly communicating them to staff and to families. So last week, as soon as we made the decisions formal, we began a massive outreach effort. So we are now calling every single family member at one of these impacted schools to walk them through the decision, and we're also, to the extent family members are interested, going to go to their homes, sit in their living room, and walk them through the decision, and let them know what choices are available to them. Ultimately, we respect families' decisions and the choices they make for their students, and so we just want to make sure to have an honest conversation about that. And we began, again, making phone calls last week, and that will continue. We have a phone number for any families that want to contact us with any questions. We also have a separate phone number for staff who have any questions, and I'll make sure to share that out before the close of this board meeting. The High School Fair happened earlier this month, and so it was on March the 14th. For those of you that weren't able to attend, it was a huge, huge success. We had over 270 families, and they represented our middle school students who are now looking for a high school, and we had over 300 actual middle school students attend, and all five of our district high schools were well-represented at the High School Fair. In addition to that, a number of our charter high schools joined, and a number of colleges and universities here locally, in addition to a number of nonprofit organizations, and a number of our board members were also there, Board Vice President Martha Wilson, Taisha Manier, along with, again, our district staff. So it was a huge success. We also announced, if you missed it, a partnership with the Croc Center. So in our strategic plan, we made a commitment to open up four parent centers across the city, and earlier this month, we announced the second of the four parent centers. And we're able to, the first one, as you may remember, was a partnership with Center for Family Services, and the second will be a partnership with the Croc Center. If you haven't been to the Croc Center recently, take the time to go. It is a huge asset for this city. It's just an absolutely phenomenal building with an incredible staff. And here at the Croc Center Parent Partnership, I'd say the very unique element of it is that we are now offering what we're calling a parent university. So families, namely the parents themselves, grandparents, guardians, can access a whole suite of seminars, workshops, to help them raise their families, to help them better understand what resources are available to them as it relates to health and wellness, raising their children, but also job skills. We're doing resume workshops through our existing parent center as well, so we're just trying to make sure that our families have as much access to this type of information and these types of resources as possible. We also have Read Across America Day. These pictures are taken from the Bonzel School, and this was a day that celebrated reading Dr. Seuss's birthday across all schools in the state of New Jersey, and we certainly celebrate it here in Camden. Just want to send some congratulatory remarks here to some of our athletes. The Camden High Boys Basketball Team, you may have heard, made it to the state championship game, they unfortunately fell just a little bit short, but they're runners-up, so let's give them a round of applause. The Bonzel Boys Basketball Team are the middle school city champions, so that's exciting. In case you didn't hear, Brim Medical Senior Jamir Washington was named All-State Wide Receiver and honored as a Super 100 All-State Athlete, and he is going to be attending college and playing football at Rutgers University. We're really proud of Jamir. We also have some retirement best wishes, and we'll do that when we go back up as a board together. Usually, our vice president leads in acknowledging those individuals, so we'll acknowledge them in just a moment. So thank you all very much, and we'll go up, and then after we do that, we'll go into public commentary.
May I get your attention, please? This month's retirements are Wendy Arthur, 26 years of service. Wendy Arthur, 26 years of service. Teresa Brown, 27 years. Ruth Cottle, 22 years. Kenneth Fisher, 25 years. Harold Hemings, 20 years. Robert Hirsch, 23 years. Irene Ortiz, 29 years. Renee Pritchett, 25 years. Linda Sutton, 15 years. And Deborah Taylor, 28 years. We would like to say thank you for your years of service here in the Camden City Board of Education School District, and thank you for all the services that you sent out to our children. Thank you so very much.
I'd like to turn the meeting back over to the superintendent.
Are there any questions on the superintendent's agenda? If not, we can move into public commentary. Oh, excuse me, so we're actually going to pivot now to the business items.
Superintendent, I request approval for one of 22 Business Office Agenda items.
So any questions on those of the superintendent's agenda? Okay, so we will now move into public commentary. So before I approve tonight's agenda items, I'm going to make one slight adjustment. So item number 23 of the Business Office Agenda should actually be item 6A of the superintendent's agenda. Thus, I'm approving tonight's superintendent's and Business Office Agenda items with the understanding that item 23 of the Business Office Agenda will be deleted and instead be inserted as item 6A of the superintendent's report.
All right, rules for public comment. Tonight, there are two public comment sessions. The meeting we are in now is a regularly scheduled board meeting to discuss tonight's agenda items. After this meeting is adjourned, there will be a separately-held budget hearing scheduled to start at 6:30 PM. The first public comment session is for comments only on tonight's agenda items for this meeting. If you wish to comment on the budget, you must sign up for public comment for the budget hearing. The signup sheet for the budget hearing public comment session is located in the hallway at the entrance to this auditorium. The budget public comment session will occur after the presentation of the budget at the 6:30 meeting. Each person who signed up to comment for this meeting will have three minutes. You will be notified when your three minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please remain at the podium and address all of your comments to the board president or the superintendent. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments, but please note that if the comments are about tonight's budget hearing, I will interrupt and ask you to withhold those comments until we have our budget hearing after this meeting. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your three-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or his designee will address your questions to the exam provided by law. Thank you for your understanding.
Good afternoon, Larry Zahn, HP Wilson Elementary School Special Needs Teacher. Superintendent Rahamapher, to the presence of the public, you have stated that Renaissance Schools have a proven track record of success. You have stated that the Renaissance Schools have a proven track record of success. This completely contradicts every research that I've read, and any magazine articles and reports that are out there. Could you tell us, audience, how many of the students who have gone to the Renaissance program have returned to our public schools from charter this year or since January? I don't think you would answer that, but we did some research, or I did some research. In a survey surveyed through schools from September 14th till today, a total of 405 students have returned to the additional public schools. That's an average of 23 students per school. This is a dirty little secret that nobody wants to talk about. How did this occur if the track record was what you stated? Were these returning students successful in the Renaissance program, or they're behavior program students or special needs kids that they didn't really have to program for and sent right back?
Okay, not to be confused, that's Karen Borelli Luke, Brim Medical Arts High School. I woke up this morning posting my daily inspirational quotes that hopefully lifts someone's spirit and mine in the process. However, it was when I went to place my daily pin upon my chest, I hesitated and began to reflect. Teachers care. I wear many hats: foster mother, dog rescuer, union ref, community outreach advocate, coach, childhound advisor, but the one that means the most, that is the core of my entire being, is a teacher. Over the last 30 years, I have observed many transformations within this established community and our school district. Things that have been turbulent and times have been trying, but we all found a way to survive and thrive. When I say "we," I mean the students, community, district, and yes, us, the teachers. I have never hidden the fact that I am a K-12 product of the Cherry Hill School System. I am very proud of that and grateful to all my teachers who helped pave the road to who I am today. I stand before you as a proud teacher of Camden School District. I am an excellent teacher. I don't need evaluations, test scores, or some business-degreed person to determine my worth. My worth comes from the results of my students' learning. There is not one student who can tell you that they have not learned in my class. No charter school or suburb school teacher can hold a candle to me or my instruction. I do not stand alone. All these teachers in this auditorium, all the teachers that are home grading papers and doing lesson plans are excellent teachers who care. Teachers care about what happens to our students when these schools close. Teachers care about what happens to these buildings and facilities that have housed instructions for decades. Teachers care about the impact that school closings have on the community and student learning. Teachers care about the morale and the spirit and the school atmosphere, which has an impact on learning. Teachers care about what happens to our other teachers. We are a family. We are not just a union. We are teachers who care and have formed a union. We stand together to convey to all who will hear. We are here because we care. We act because we care. We unite because we care. We are empowered because we care, and we will fight to show we care. So don't let anyone ever state that teachers do not care, that the CEA does not care. We will do whatever it is to show we care about Camden and our public schools. I do have a question. My question is the bold vision. You speak about enclosing our schools and placing them under Mastery or Uncommon. You cite poor student outcomes, failing or insufficient enrollment, and failing facilities. Is this because, under your direction, there is no curriculum and no oversight? Some schools have had six administrators this year alone.
Thank you, Ms. Borelli, your time is up. Three, Heather Fernandez-Schafer. Number three, Heather Fernandez-Schafer.
Good evening. This question is for the superintendent, Mr. Rahamapher. You stated in the press that our students can't wait any longer for the opportunity to attend a safe, successful neighborhood school. Since five schools remain in the same neighborhood, isn't this statement contradictory? What schools are unsafe, and why is this allowed? Someone is misleading this community.
My name is Ulysses Delgado, highest taxpayer in the city of Camden. We've been having lately a lot of problems in Wilson, and the outside of the schools. Gang activities from the other side want to come and bother our kids. Another thing, a lot of these teachers in the city of Camden right here, I told them, where Mr. Fraser, Ms. Monique, Mr. Mongolisa, we demonstrated at the school building two and a half years ago. None of the teachers stood up. Not one stood outside in the school administration building. Our kids in the city of Camden right here, I only want the best for my kids in the city of Camden right here. The ones who are struggling right now is our special needs kids. A lot of these kids in this school right here, in Pine Point right here, can't even read and write, and you're teaching my kids. Must be teaching my kids something else. Well, the Wilson are having a lot of problems. I talked to a lot of teachers, I'm involved with Mr. Mark Miles over there, real heavily in Wilson. We're having a lot of problems. And you teachers want to come in here and fight for your jobs. And you teachers wanted to come in here and fight for your jobs. My daughter, my niece is losing her job as a principal. She goes to Melina School, she's a principal with a master's degree, very intelligent person. She's fighting for her job. She's a very good, very good principal. Now she has to apply like everybody else. Teachers in here who don't want to teach our kids, want to waste their time with my kids by, you have to learn how to educate our kids in the city of Camden. A lot of the kids are having problems in their houses and all this stuff. Their parents are working, a lot of them on drugs and all this, using obscene languages at their kids, and they bring that to school, and a lot of our teachers punish our kids because they're cussing in there. They don't even know the difference. They think that's all right because they're here in our schools. And I'm tired of these teachers in here. You want to teach our kids, teach them. You don't want to work in Camden? Just come and draw a check? Goodbye, I don't need you. I want teachers who are going to teach our kids, who go up to the 21st century. What you say? You got something to say? Come and talk to me. I'm the taxpayer here. I'm the taxpayer here. None of you teachers, my God, you teachers don't even live in the city of Camden. You guys don't know what we go through in the city of Camden, with drug activity, fighting all the time. I'm here, and I'm a candidate for City Council, who's going to stand up for our kids in Camden City. You don't like it? Get out of the way, I don't need you. At the end of the day, none of you teachers pay my salary. I pay my bills in my house.
Number six, Christine Mayo. Number six, Christine Mayo.
Excuse me. Let's have order, please, thank you.
Number six, Christine Mayo.
My name is Christine Mayo. I'm a proud teacher of Whittier School. The student I have next to me is Nasir Carter, whose mother is a proud teacher at Whittier School. He was a little nervous, so he's holding a sign that says he's thanking his teachers because he is able to read thanks to his teachers at Whittier School. Here's my question. The Whittier School has provided education in Camden City for the past 105 years, and it will be closed. The front steps have been not used for the last 25 years and have never been repaired by the district. Based on your comments on the age of our building, should we not close Harvard and Yale as their buildings are overruled by the DSR? The difference is, they were maintained by capital projects. As superintendent, how many capital projects have you approved for Camden Schools? That's my first statement. Second statement, real quick. You have stated that 1 in 5 district students or 20% can read on math level, grade level. We, the teachers at Whittier School, are all about the data. We have data binders, we have running records, and we have DRA scores for our students. Before school today, I went to my colleagues in grades K-3 and asked them to share with me a piece of their literacy data. In our kindergarten classrooms, 14 out of 25, or 56%, are reading on and above grade level. In our second grade classrooms, 13 out of 26 are reading on above grade level, which is 50%. In our third grade, 11 out of 18, which is 61%. And finally, in the first grade, 15 out of 24, which is 63%, are on and above grade level. And I have a special guest here, who you may call a statistic of Whittier School. I would rather refer to him as a success from Whittier School.
Number eight, Monique Ragsdale.
Good afternoon. Before I even start, I would like to say thank you to Whittier because a lot of the teachers at Whittier have taught my three graduate sons from former Landon Square, okay? And Landon Square closed in 2013, not 10 years ago. Downtown has lost four schools. Yes, it was Feathers, Parkside, and Broadway, and now Whittier. Downtown can't afford to lose any more schools just to get enrollments for a new school, okay? I do have some questions. The parents who does not want to send their children, or maybe I should rephrase this, the parents who already unrolled their children from these schools and would like to send their kids to the traditional public school, will they be provided transportation? Also, are you going to downsize your administration now that you're downsizing the schools because we don't need all that overhead? Matt, you speak of school choice. How is it school choice when there is no options? Also, I would like to know in the budget, because I read the budget, and I don't see where it reflects where we sold our schools and got any money generated from that revenue. Also, when you sell our public school freedom, oh, I'm sorry, our justice, oops, I'm sorry, what happens when the Renaissance fell? Because I believe in that legislation, that it falls back on the district, but since you're selling the district out, what will they fall back on? Will they just eventually close? And also, what about the parents? What about the parents? Because I know you have Wigan School there, and Wigan's the only traditional public school left downtown, and I think y'all need to re-go back and, you know, talk about this. I see you, you know, every time I come up here and I talk about, you know, Camden Schools, you don't talk about reform, you don't talk about anything to do anything for the district, and all I hear is transformation, safety corridors, and if you're saying our children is failing, obviously you failed, because you haven't done anything since you've been here. And to say that, you going by data, what data are you using? These Renaissance schools haven't even been open a year, so any child or any parent that sit up there and say, "Oh, we going by data," where are you getting this data from? Because if you want to break it down, y'all say Renaissance is public schools. Renaissance is only public because they get our public funding. You should protect what we already have.
Number nine, Victoria Palat.
Good morning. Excuse me. Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Palat, and I want to first by saying, number one, I am a product of Camden City Schools. I graduated from Whittier. I graduated from Morgan Village, and I graduated from Camden High. You want the high? You got the high. I have a statement and I have a question, Mr. Superintendent Raham Afar. You stated that the Renaissance schools in Camden will be built with a culture from scratch, meaning that they will bring in a grade level every year. If this is true, then why are the students of East Camden Middle School, Bonzel, and Whittier being forced to partner with Renaissance schools? What choice was given to these students or their parents for these schools? You said, "Vote with your feet." They did. They went to the school in September, and they enrolled there, or they stayed where they were enrolled. I believe that our students are being redirected, because you need, or they need, this Renaissance needs to bolster the failing enrollment at these charter and Renaissance schools. If you had never taken the bilingual community out of East Camden Middle, where I have served for the last 23 years, and lived in Camden up until 15 years ago, if you had not have taken those children from us when I'm over here, our enrollment would not have been down. It was that part of the plan too. Thank you.
Number 10, Josetta Momo.
Hi, how you guys doing today? My name is Josetta Momo, and I'm a parent with Greater Camden Schools. I wrote down some information so I can basically tell you guys exactly how I feel. I feel that, first of all, we don't need to be arguing about our kids' education. We need to be coming together as one. Also, I wanted to leave you guys with a definition. Operate conditioning. Operate conditioning is a method of learning that occurs through reinforcement and punishment for behavior. It encourages the subject to associate desirable or undesirable outcome with certain behaviors. We need to understand that we are modeling and shaping these kids' behavior by our actions, by the way that we speak to them, by just the way that we go. And we can't blame the teachers, the community, and the students. We can only blame ourselves, because we need to stand up as one, like one another, and stand together to make a change for these kids. Greater Camden Schools is an organization that has brought back voice to individuals who feel voiceless, and all I'm saying is that to join the movement to make change. That's it.
Number 11, Ariello Rodriguez.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Arbel Rodriguez, and I represent Parents for Greater Camden Schools, and I just want to make a comment in the essence of, you know, I work in the city as well. I've worked as a teacher, as a behavioral assistant, an outreach worker, mentor, a coach, and I've seen young people at many different levels, and I just want to make it very clear, I've seen amazing teachers within the city. I've seen a lot of teachers, I'm a product of public schools as well. I was just saying that I think, like, for instance, Medical Arts is probably the premier high school within Camden, and it's a public school, but at the end of the day, I think the parents are the ones that really should be taking full responsibility of what's going on with the young people, because you can't blame the teachers, you can't blame the city, you can't blame the Board of Ed, you can't blame anybody else, but at the end, if I'm a teacher, I've seen it. Like, I've seen kids coming to the school, and they're not eating, and they're, you know, I've seen parents that have young people who don't go to class, grades are horrible, but there's an incident such as they get into a fight, the parents will come up trying to fight teachers, trying to fight the staff, but don't come every day to make sure that their kids are going to class. And I think that's what we need to be focusing on, you know, making sure the parents are accountable for what's going on in the city, because I think the parents are the very first teachers. And at the end of the day, you can point fingers all you want, but the parents are the ones that need to be teaching, all right? And the parents need to be accountable. The parents need to be making sure that the kids are eating breakfast, that the kids are able to focus, and not put it on the teachers or the board or anybody else, because at the end of the day, like I said, I've seen some amazing teachers. I've seen people, you know, work with little bit, with little resources, but you don't live with the kids. The kids don't live in the classroom. You know, they have to go home eventually, and eventually they move on to another grade. So whether it be public school or charter or whatever it be, I think everybody, if you're a mechanic, you're supposed to be an awesome mechanic. If you're a teacher, then you're an amazing teacher. But at the end of the day, if you're a parent, you have to be a parent as well, all right? Thank you.
Number 12, Ariane White.
Good evening. My voice is sore, so excuse me. I might go a little bit over. First, I want to thank you for your disclaimer that you offered today about the teachers. However, your comments insinuating that the Camden City Public School teachers are incapable of providing high-quality education has been well documented. I want to go on record and state to you that I find them degrading, demoralizing, disrespectful, unprofessional, and seriously, seriously flawed. Despite the lack of a knowledgeable and experienced constant supervisor, an updated curriculum, working texts, current, our texts were so outdated that the charities didn't want them, they considered them obsolete. However, I was able, my students passed the New Jersey ASH last year at 86% passing rate. So about the teachers who don't teach, just for that for you. Secondly, voluntary work on a homework program we did after school, we were able, Ms. Myers and myself, worked with the eighth graders, and the scores went from 11% passing rate in language to 56%, and then the funds were cut for the homework program. So I'm wondering how, you're saying you're going to success, and then once something is successful, then it's eliminated. Parents want the stickers for great schools in Camden, I appreciate that. You keep saying you want great schools. You need to please understand that it's the teachers who are educated, trained, and chosen as a profession because of passion and dedication to students, and not to get a student loan paid off is that makes that happen. In my, my question to you mainly is about your constant comments about that Renaissance and charter schools will be providing that great quality education for the children, yet 2012, actually was issued in 2013, ran in 2012, the Credo Report, which was won by Stanford University and paid for by the New Jersey Department of Education, quote on page 16, yet, okay, in the major cities such as Camden, Patterson, Jersey City, and, you missed my word, Trenton, it shows that charter school students in those areas learn significantly less than the public school counterparts. You are constantly misleading the public, and I'm really concerned about why. Are you being misled, or are you just deliberately trying to mislead us? Second, my next issue, the next time I'm hosting a teacherama with CEA and NJ and PDK, please do not schedule conflicting spontaneous events so that more of your board members can attend and learn about what's going on truthfully with the education statistics and access rates, especially when the New Jersey DOE themselves put out that charter school magic is all a myth. Thank you.
Number 13, Greg Clayton.
Is it tall enough? Hello, my name is Greg Clayton. I'm... Can you hear me? Yeah, I don't think I can. Can you all hear me?
No.
My name is Greg Clayton. I'm a resident of Camden, New Jersey. I was in every Camden school as far as Hatch, Medies. I was born and raised in Camden, and I believe I support change and choice. That is all.
Number 14, Jennifer Perez.
Hello, everyone, my name is... Hello, everyone, my name is Jennifer Perez, and I support, I'm from Parents for Greater Camden Schools, I support the change, but also want to make a statement. I think that teachers and parents should come together because there's a lack of communication. We should work together because there is no blame. It's just all about children's education, because parents go to work, teachers teach, and it's our job as parents to continue their education when the children go home. So it's not the blame on just teachers, it's parents as well, and it's a lack of communication, so we should be there and support these children, period.
Number 15, Kona Jean Just.
Hi. My name is Kama, and I'm a member of Parents for Greater Camden Schools, and I want y'all to know that I support change and choices that y'all are making, but I also want y'all to know that although that there are a lot of... want y'all to know that although that there are a lot of changes, that you have to realize that there's a lot of great teachers still in the Camden district. Like, the three teachers here that I know, Ms. Pilat, Ms. McKen, and Mr. Livingston, they helped me out throughout school. If it wasn't for them, I doubt I could have got through middle school because they helped me realize that school is very supposed to be focused. If anyone else is gonna help you, they're the ones that's gonna lead you. Mr. Rodriguez has been a mentor of mine, even while I'm out of school, he's still trying to help me and support me. And even my personal favorite teacher, Ms. Prescott, she's been guiding me through life. She's the only one who's like, if ever I screw up, she's the only one that really makes sure that there's nothing going on. She's putting me right back in track no matter what. So, don't forget that.
Number 16, Alicia Figueroa.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alicia. I'm a product of Woodrow Wilson, East Camden Middle, Octavius Vicato, Dudley Elementary, and so on. Okay. So first and foremost, I wanted to mention that even though we do have good teachers, we also have bad teachers in Camden, and I could say that personally. A lot of teachers I've, some teachers I've had, I don't know if it's the curriculum or the teachers, that I haven't been challenged enough where I needed to be challenged. So also, the man that came here, he was up here earlier, he went on ranting of some teachers don't care, and the crowd got a little excited over it. If you do care, there's no reason why we should even pay mind to the negative. Just like us coming from Camden, we never, we should never pay attention to the negative that people say. So if you're a teacher here and you care, don't worry about what other people think. If you care, you know you care. Because there are teachers that are here and they're fighting just for their job, not for our education. Also, I recently joined Parents for Greater Camden Schools, and I just wanted to point out what they're doing is great. They're trying to get our education better, and that's what we're all here doing. And when parents come out, when you see us out in the streets trying to get our people to get more involved into our program, please come out and please participate because this is for the future of Camden, not just for the students, not just for the adults, not just for the teachers or the board. This is for the future of our city. And without that, we have nothing, so.
Number 17, Gregory Christopher.
Good afternoon, Mr. Rohanford, members of the board. This evening, I speak with the voice of many. First off, not let's, let us not call... Let us not call what you would want to call a partnership, which is indeed a hostile takeover. This is not easy for me. I've been in the district for 17 years. I am both shocked and dismayed by the manner in which you chose to implement the district restructuring plan. There were no community meetings informing parents of any choice for schools. You mandated in defiance of the law, the total transfer of staff and students to new locations, thus destroying the neighborhood and the neighborhood school systems. You destroyed our morale, professionalism by your press statements on our failure to provide an education for our students. Anyone who has been paying attention to what has been taking place in New Orleans, Wisconsin, New Jersey, and other states in this country, recognize the game plan. Confiscate the public schools in the inner, poor, innocent areas, and then turn them over to be run by private corporations. And what bothers me the most, Mr. Rohanford, is that you have not been honest with the community concerning your vision for this school district. You have a fiduciary responsibility to be honest with the stakeholders about the future plans for this district. If you cannot approach this transition with honesty, and if you choose not to be the superintendent for all of the schools here in Camden, then I will respectfully request that you resign as the leader of this school district.
Number 18, Robert Farmer.
Good evening, Superintendent Rohanford and board members. You know, I have been sitting down with the superintendent for over 18 months, listening to his vision of what Camden will look like, you know, in the future. One thing that, there's a couple things that bothers me though, because I, you know, it just came out to me, is that our community is being basically forced to go to these charter schools. They're being forced. I mean, there's no, there has not been conversation about the closing of these schools. And the purpose of, you know, I heard that they will receive new facilities, but I didn't know the facilities were going to be ran by charter mastery. You know, I think that was, that was something that, you know, this organization, Camden Education Association, should have known. I'm a product of the Camden school system, okay? I went to Woodyer School, graduated from Woodyer. I went to a Hatch Middle School, graduated from Hatch, and I graduated from Camden High School. Came back to this district and taught for 25 years. 25 years I taught in this district. You can't tell me public education don't work. I am now the president of this association with a public education. Many of you sitting up on this board here has a public education. You can't tell me it doesn't work. Listening at your media tour, I have been paying very close attention to the media tour, and you have not, Superintendent, given Camden Public Schools any credit, any credit for anything we have done. All we have heard is selective failures by this great city. I have just two questions to ask you. When this transformation occurs, our staff at these schools that close, are they going to be giving a fair shake, a fair transfer, following their students, or is it going to be lip service? Second question that was brought to me tonight was the fact that our special area teachers, what is going to happen to them? I've heard that it's going to be a movement to reduce these special area teachers. These teachers, these teachers and support staff that supports them, they're very important to this system. They're very important to the services that we have for our student base. What are we going to do with them? How are we going to transition them into this plan?
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Number 19, Ralph Williams. 19, Ralph Williams. Number 20, Gary Frazier.
So, good evening. Since we only making statements here tonight, or I guess you guys want us to speak towards the agenda, I'm gonna take this opportunity to say, hey, welcome all you parents who got those patches on your chest. We've been at this war for about four years now with this district. Welcome, welcome to the school board meetings. Good to see you guys coming out. And apparently, you guys really don't know me yet, because you clapped. So, I will say this to the parents. I want you to take some time and get yourselves educated on what's really happening here in our district.
Sir, please address your comments to the superintendent.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get back to him in a second. To the parents, no, you don't need education on coming together for change, but you need education on what they're doing and how they're systematically dividing us as a people here in Camden. You need education on that.
Sir, please address your comments to the superintendent.
Yeah, I'll get back to the superintendent in a second. Back to these parents. Your forefathers have died for you for the right to go to public schools, to drink out of the same water fountains, to walk down the same streets. This district, this superintendent that they want me to get back to, and since you want me to turn my attention back to Mr. Rohanford, I will do just that. Mr. Rohanford, we came to you a couple times before, talking to you about what the implication of your plan was going to be for this district. Well, lo and behold, Mr. Rohanford, you have shown us, we're losing how many schools now?
Six.
We're losing six public schools. God knows how many of our educators will be terminated as a result of your actions and each and every one of your plans that sit up here on this board. I cannot say for myself that I am happy that this is happening to us here in this district. I am a graduate of Pine Point Middle School here at this school. And to see the things that are happening here in our district, NJEA, you have no accountability whatsoever. You are not standing up for these educators. You're pouring out in Newark, you're pouring out in Trenton, you're pouring out in Patterson, but you ain't doing jack for these educators here in Camden. These educators are at war with this district right here, who has a plan for itself, and that plan is to close each and every one of our public schools. Our children are no one's guinea pig, the same way with the park test. This administration did not go around to the district and give parents the options that they had the right to refusal, the right, the legislation we moved in the State House for sit and stare. It is your obligation to inform these parents of what's truly going on at the State House down here to us here on the local level. The parents have the right not to take that park test, their children have the right to refuse it. It is your job to express that to them, just as much it is your job to prepare them for the schools you intend to close. And parents, this wouldn't be happening if you would be standing up. Nobody can do what they are doing to us here in Camden. If you stood up on your back, on your feet, four years ago, they wouldn't be taking our schools, they wouldn't be doing none of this. They doing what they doing because we allowed them to do it. They don't do it in Cherry Hill, they don't do it in College Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Your time is up. Please leave the podium. Number 21, Connie Visanti. Number 21, Connie Visanti. Sir, please have a seat. Your time is up. Sir, please have a seat. Your time is up. Please have a seat. Your time is up. Hey, tell them to back off. Hey, tell them to back off. Number 21, Connie Visanti. Number 21, Connie Visanti. Number 22, Sarah Josh. Number 22. Connie Visanti. Mr. Davis, we'll get to you. We'll get, did you want to comment? Okay, I'll put you on. Okay.
Can I have your attention, please? Good evening. My name is Connie Visanti. I live in Cherry Hill. I'm a union representative for 27 years of State of New Jersey. I was wondering if your teachers have a right to unionize and are they part of a union? Can you hear me now? My name is Connie Visanti. I live in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. I worked for State of New Jersey Motor Vehicles for 27 years, and I'm a union member and a union organizer at that time. Do you have a union where you work, and would you like to unionize? You should be part of a union because they do great things for you. For 27 years, I was encouraged by the unions to get better and better and better. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Number 22, Sarah Josh.
Hi, I'm Sarah Joslin. If you didn't hear Connie's question, her question was, do the Renaissance schools have unions?
No.
And if they don't have unions, do they have the right to unionize? Okay. My, my questions are the number of students that are impacted by the change of schools. I'd like to know the number of students that are currently enrolled that will be impacted by this change. I'd also like to know the map of the catchment areas and the timeline for placement of students in the schools. What happens if there is not enough space for their first choice? How will these students be settled into the schools? You noted that the renovations of the schools that are going to be converted to Renaissance management will be over a three-year period. Please clarify if the renovations are going to be ongoing while the children are present in the school. I do note that I believe it's the New Jersey Civil Law Center. Comment on the segregated effect of the first-year Renaissance schools in Camden City. Granted, these are a very small number of students, but I do raise it to the board that the, that this is being watched as an item of concern in a larger system. I also have the question, I wanted to raise a question, there was not a response. There was not a response that I have heard earlier. I attended a public session of the school board prior to their retreat. There were two members of the public that asked, that suggested that the school advisory board pass a resolution that the public be allowed to vote for a school board. They asserted that this, that the school board, the school advisory board was supposed to turn public responsibility over at the end of 2014. And the question was raised, is that accurate? And has the school advisory board considered that action? I also ask, would like to ask if there are members of the school board that have a conflict of interest related to the Renaissance schools, do they recuse themselves for votes? I think that is a question that in the public, we need to know. I appreciate all the efforts of the superintendent and the board in their time in taking public comment. Thank you for your time.
Number 23 Michelle Martinez.
Buenas tardes. Yo no crecí en Camden, no estudié en Camden, ni me gradué en Camden, pero vivo en Camden y mis hijos estudian en Camden. Así que mi preocupación es real.
I didn't grow up in Camden. I didn't, I, but my children do live here and so my concerns are real.
Yo quiero saber, ¿cada cuánto tiempo los maestros reciben adiestramientos para actualizar los métodos de enseñanza en las escuelas? En específico con el uso de tecnología y la implementación de nuevas técnicas educativas en comparación a diez, quince o veinte años atrás?
She would like to know what type of training teachers receive in the school district and as far as their skills in technology, also in teaching methodologies, and how does that compare to the type of training that they received 10, 15, 20 years ago?
Reconozco que hay maestros buenos, pero también reconozco que hay maestros que no adoptan el compromiso, ya sea porque se sienten poco apoyados por el sistema o sobrecargados con la responsabilidad sobre el sistema y no solo con el rol de maestro particular.
She recognizes that there are very good teachers within the district, but she also recognizes that there are some teachers that just seem to be overwhelmed by the changes that are coming. And basically, the changes that are coming in education.
Mi confusión más grande en este momento es porque no entiendo qué es lo que hace a los maestros calificados para este proyecto que ofrece Mastering mejor que los maestros que conocemos en el sistema de educación en este momento.
She would like to know what makes the teachers that are qualified to teach in the Mastery system better than the teachers that we have in the existing system? That's it.
Number 24 Mike Warren.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Michael Warren. I have been a member of this district for 25 years. I'm a proud teacher of Woodrow Wilson High School. My question is, time and time again, why do we fail to tell the story of those scores with a narrative that really tells the story? Why do we fail to delve into the numbers? For example, at Woodrow Wilson, we have a population, a demographic of 30% special needs students, 30% roughly of English language learners, and 30% students who would, I guess, be considered on a regular track. But yet, we are often criticized for having low test scores. Do we really expect our special needs students to be on level to pass these scores? And do we really expect our English language learners, oftentimes who are here with minimal experience in the English language, to then pass these scores? So when we compare these scores to other districts, our scores look exceptionally low. But if you would just tell the story, tell the narrative that really the people who are supposed to be passing this test really are passing these scores. So therefore, you're making us look bad and we continually see that you fail to tell the scores, to tell the story of these scores, to delve inside those scores. Why play games with the numbers?
Number 25 Chanel Sharp.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cheryl Sharp, and I have a fifth grader who attends the Mastery North Camden here at Pine Point. I just want to say that I welcome the change. I'm for the choice. I think that parents deserve the right to choose. It may not be for everyone, but choice is open to those who are open to it. I am a product of the Camden school system, and I had some great teachers. I graduated here at Pine Point. You know, my favorite teacher here was the late Sister Dorothy Mears. You know, I went to Hatch. I had Mr. White. He was a great teacher. I'm not taking away from the school system, saying that there's no great teachers there. There are great teachers. However, I'm for the change. I'm for the choice. Mastery may not work for everybody. It works for me and my daughter. You know, coming from the district schools, my daughter is fifth grade reading on the second or third grade level. Since attending Mastery, it has improved. And like I said, it may not work for everybody, but it works for me. So I support the change and I welcome it. Thank you.
Number 27 Michelle Paybon.
Good evening to the board. To those parents that have tag, I have no tag. To those teachers that are going against the parents that have tags, if you did a good job, don't worry about it. My problem is, I graduated three kids out of Camden County Schools, 31 and 27. Got diplomas, hang on my wall. And my kids slipped through the cracks. They cannot read or write. Explain to me how that happened? Special ed children, and these children that bring $35,000 to the district. What happened to that? $35,000 to the district. What happened to that? They promoted for them to graduate it. Let's move them on ahead. Never mind if they can't read and write. Let's just get them out. They special ed students. We can handle them. Now explain to me how that happened? I got three little granddaughters here now in McGraw School. I don't want that to happen. I'm gonna fight to the end, to the end, to see my granddaughters graduate, learning how to read and write. I am the sample of that parent. Worked two jobs, not on welfare, and expect the Camden schools to teach my children. What happened to that? What happened? Can somebody answer me? I got three diplomas hung on my wall and another work. Because my kids cannot go to college. They're not allowing them to college because they can't read and write. Can you explain? Excuse me. Teachers were here. $35,000 were paid every year for those children. $35,000 a year were paid to those teachers to help my children. That's what special ed children bring to this district. You know how I know? Because when I transferred Anna Gonzalez to St. John of God, $35,000 was transferred every year. So somebody explain to me where that money went.
Number 20.
Can I sue? Can I sue? My children are going crazy. And they can't do anything. They don't know how to do anything but be in the streets. And that's how thousands of children here in Camden die every year. Because they don't know how to read and write. They don't know anything else. Explain to me, teachers, those who are here applauding. I don't want to hear that I wasn't a parent because those who know my face here, there's a lot of guards here that know my face, always saw me in Camden, Woodrow Wilson. Ms. Cook always saw me in Vex. I was not a neglecting parent. I did not neglect my children. But my teachers failed my children. So explain to me that. So are we gonna change for the better? Is it gonna be for the better? Because if it's gonna be for the better, I'd go for it. But if it's gonna be for the worse, then... Come on. Get it together, and parents.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Like I did.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Uh, number 28 Claudia Cream.
Explain to me, teachers. Thank you.
Ma'am, please don't interrupt. Your time is up.
Good evening. Good evening. Can I have your attention, please? Good evening, Claudia Cream. I stand here with a heavy heart because Pine Point is like home. I was a student here, teacher, and administrator. And I'm concerned about the fact that a number of schools are being closed. Not closed, but being moved to the highest bidder. And I have a question about that. First of all, about the haste of selling the schools. You indicated, Mr. Superintendent, that from your meetings with the public, this was a concern. I do get feedback from all of those meetings. And the total number of individuals that attended those meetings is not representative of the total student population. So you don't have an accurate count of who's making decision. What would have been beneficial if you had an ad hoc committee of, number one, experienced, knowledgeable individuals in the district? Because those that are now part of the district do not have a history of this district, experience, or knowledge. So if you had an ad hoc committee, you would have found that maybe, and I hope you've done this, that you put together itemized list of what it would take to modernize these schools and then present that accurate information to the public to make an intelligent, informed decision. I hope that report's available. If it's available, I would like to have a copy. Because in order for these Renaissance to take over, they have to make those improvements. So we should know what it should cost to keep the schools as they are. That's number one. So I'll be contacting you to see if that is available. Number two. I just want to mention about the park test because I was a part of a group of individuals that came to Camden, business owners. And one of the questions they asked someone from the district about the safety here in the city because their daughter, they're from North Jersey, suburban area, their daughter came home to say, Mom, I understand you're going to Camden. That was one of the questions on the park test dealing with poverty. Poverty in Camden. And that individual was concerned about coming to Camden. That's number two. And let me just give you some information. The opinion is that there's no good things going on in the city. The teachers aren't teaching. We cannot judge all by the actions of a few. I just heard a report that was called to me from teachers that were laid off there in other districts. They are so superb in those districts that they're being ostracized by those that are in that district, Washington Township, Deptford. But in their own district where they work very hard, they did not get the respect and the credit while they were here. So I think you need to step back and realize that those that are here are not sitting on their thumbs. We were here, and I can say that from teacher, principal, still advocate. We are about heart here. What I see from Mastery and everyone else is what can I put on the charts to make my position in this city? And as I look around, alright, I'm gonna finish my comment. As I look around, I do not see the news media where individuals are telling the truth. They seem to be here when it's staged. So I would like some information. I'll be calling your office.
Number 29 Magalisa Davis. Last speaker, Magalisa Davis.
Magalisa Davis. 500 Block, North 7th Street. To the board, first, first and foremost, this is not black history. This is women's month. And I would be remiss if I did not give praise to the original woman of the universe, God and Goddess. 300 years of coming forth with children that worked from Kenzie to Canse, to build this country to what it is. And still she rise. She is my queen in motion. Thank you, sisters and the original women. If you're blessed with melon, thank you. And thank the teachers. And thank all the teachers for what you tried to do. I feel just as bad for you because I told you two years, the house was on fire. It didn't have to end like this. It didn't have to end like this. To the chair. I gave you some Oprah requests. Seven days is up. I want to know what's up with that. Mr. Penmore. Cream School, it was filthy. And you had our children come on there, sitting there in the mornings to eat and then take them somewhere else. If it wasn't fit for the teachers, it should not be fit for those children to be in that school. Those children were in that dirty [BLEEP] school. Filthy on the doors. I know you got the word after I went through there, like a tornado on your butt. If the people upstairs are working with hazmat suits on and masks, why you got our babies in that goddamn school? What's up with that? You could have took them over to the church.
Mr. Davis, I'm gonna end your comment time now.
Big what?
You were told, don't curse or use vulgar language. I'm gonna end your comment time now. That was your second curse word. I'm gonna end your comment time now. I'm going to end your comment time now. You were told, don't curse or use vulgar language. That was twice. So that's it. That's it, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, that's it. We're gonna move on to the next portion of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
You gonna sit up here and let that other bum speak last?
We're gonna move to the next portion of the meeting, thank you. Now we're gonna have student comments, student board member comments.
I'm Khadija Shubrick from Brim Medical Arts High School. And I would like to start off by saying that Brim Medical Arts is doing fine on our own little island, as we like to call it. And I would also like to say that this past weekend, we went on an overnight camping trip and it was well organized and supervised. I was the only senior to go, but I felt as though it was a great bonding experience for me and everyone else in the lower grades. And also, I would like to commend the first annual high school fair because I did attend that as well advocating for Brim. And I wish we had one, but I still would have chose Brim anyway. So it was a great and it was an inventive event. And also, I would like to say that our school, we're taking many college trips throughout the month of April so we can pass the baton to the juniors so they can make early decisions as well. Also, I would like to commend our mark for their great organizational food. If we need anything, they come very fast, like, I can't thank them anymore because it's a great transformation from the beginning of the school year till now, honestly. And that's all I would like to say.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the representative from Woodrow Wilson High School. There's really nothing going on lately. Most of my seniors have gone to their college fair trips that they have attended. Tomorrow, they'll be going to Roan University and start applying. There's really nothing going on, mostly that's been happening lately is our, of course, ASA and HESPA testing. So, um, our anime club that we have at our school, they have just came back from an anime convention called Zenkai Con. They had a lot of fun and we also received a lot of pictures of things that's been there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Apparently, there were two other public commenters that signed up on the wrong sheet, but I'm gonna call them up now. The first one is, uh, Yonita Martin, uh, please step up to the podium. Yonita Martin.
I'm sorry, are we still in the budget portion?
Budget portion's at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Um, I can only speak for myself, I'm not from Camden at all, but we live here now. When we moved here, we moved to Camden, my children were in Camden School. Being a parent who loves to read, I sit down and read with my children all the time. So I know that my children's reading level weren't on point. While they were at a Camden School, their report cards came home straight A's in every subject. I know my children are strong in math and science, but they weren't that strong in reading at the time. When I moved them out of Camden to another district, they were behind. I'm not saying that for every teacher in this school, they weren't teaching my kids, but the school they were in, they weren't teaching them. So now they're in Mastery School, Dante is in Mastery School, my other child is in Freedom Prep. I've been advocating since I've been at Mastery to expand Mastery for the higher grade so I can move my other child there too, because Mastery works the best for my family. Dante actually wanted to tell you how much he likes Mastery too, so... Yeah. You gonna do it? Same thing you said last time. Same thing you said at the last meeting. You gonna do it or not? Come on.
When I came to Mastery, my reading was bad, but now my reading is up. And I'm good at reading and I always want to be reading at school or home. And, and... My teachers help me a lot on my homework and, and help me make good choices at school and make sure I'm okay, not feeling, not feeling bad.
So, so what I, all I really wanted to say was, I realize at this point, everybody is here, everybody's complaining about the schools closing, but it's really about the kids and where they're gonna learn. Mastery might not be the best school for you, the Renaissance schools might not be the best school for you. The public schools might not be the best schools, but if you don't give the Renaissance schools a chance, you won't know. You really don't know whether or not your public school is teaching the kids what they need to learn until you move them outside of the district, which I found out that my children were behind. But I knew that for reading for them because I read myself and I read with my children and I knew they weren't up to par. But to send me home a report card that says he's doing good in reading when I know that's a problem, I needed help from the teacher to tell me how I need to help my child in reading. And I get that at Mastery. Dante's reading score has gone up. Dante likes going to school, he gets up in the morning. We don't have any problems as far as me telling him to read a book, who just reads the book right off the bat now.
Please stop interrupting.
It's the best for my family.
Alright, last comment is Brian Morton.
Good evening, uh, my name is Brian Morton. I am the executive director and founder of Parents for Great Camden School. We are an organization of parents, educators, and community leaders united to bring high quality change to the Camden City School District. And we believe that that can be accomplished without pointing fingers. Tonight, tonight was an interesting night. Tonight, our, our, our parents got to witness for the first time what they are up against. We also got to hear from some impassioned and concerned educators. But what we at Parents for Great Camden Schools believe that change will not be possible if a conversation cannot take place between the parties that are involved. But we also believe that primary in that conversation must be the needs and desires of the parents whose children are being educated in our school systems regularly. Primary in that conversation must be those parents who have become frustrated with a system that is not fulfilling the promises that they are expecting to be fulfilled. Primary in that conversation must be the parents who sit back and may not have the capacity. I've heard where we have sought to blame students and blame parents and... I was a teenage parent. At the age of sixteen, I walked out of Woodrow Wilson, I've shared this story. So I dropped out in ninth grade. I had my first child at sixteen. So when we're sitting back and we're blaming parents who in many cases didn't have the rulebook on how to be a parent, when we're blaming students who come from an environment that may be chaotic and we're saying, "Hey, it's on you to do more, and it's on you when they get home to do more," then we are excusing what is happening during the vast majority of their day. And that shouldn't be it. You guys didn't show up tonight because you don't care. You didn't show up just for your jobs, I don't believe that. I believe that you do care what happens to our children, but the conversation has to take place differently. Paymon's been here eighteen months, we've had a fifty percent dropout rate for twenty years. That's not his, that's ours. That's us as parents, that's us as educators. Sitting here pointing fingers, rallying up, trying to assess blame on others is not going to create a solution to the problem. And that's that too many of our students are failing. Too many of our students are believing that education is not a pathway to the future and so they have left our schools and they have signed up lock, stock, and barrels for these corners. Our prison system is outperforming our education system and that is a problem. So I hope that at the end of all of this...
Thank you, Mr. Morton, your time is up. Alright, that ends our public comment session.
Okay, whoa, sorry about that. So I'm gonna do my best to respond to the various comments and questions that were raised. That was a particularly long list of questions and issues, so if I don't get to any specific item, please know it's not for any bad intent, it's simply, I did my best to take notes here. Let me just begin by addressing what I thought were a few common threads. And clearly, uh, we, you know, myself personally anticipated there to be some anxieties today in light of the recent news. And, you know, a number of people commented about the intent of the decisions, the implications, and the insinuations, and Ms. Ariane White, if I'm saying your name right, is she still in the room, Ms. White? I saw her earlier, she might have just stepped, she's over there. Yeah, I thought, I thought your comments were, were pointed in that you made clear that there was a disclaimer, I think to use your word, as far as, we're not pointing the finger, but you felt that there's a certain insinuation. All of you are welcome to draw your own conclusions and opinions, but I'm just gonna tell you directly again, we aren't pointing the finger. All of you all care. No one is disputing how much everyone in this room cares. We all agree on the end destination, we may not agree on the path to get there. And so, in my role in making these decisions, fundamentally, the vast majority of our kids are today in district schools. And in every single public meeting, including this one, we begin by talking about the bright spots. And every single set of public comments I've ever given, I've begun by talking about the fact that our schools are safer today than they were prior to my appointment. The fact that our pre-K enrollment is at ninety-six percent, the fact that our graduation rate is up fifty-six to sixty-two percent. So for those of you that made the comment that we're here only to promote new organizations and aren't here to support our schools, that doesn't align to reality. That doesn't align to the hard work that's happening every single day in our school buildings, the professional development that we're providing our principals and our teachers. So I do want to make that plea. And again, you're welcome to draw your own opinions and your own conclusions as far as, you know, what these announcements entail, but I do want to state as clear as I possibly can, clearly as I possibly can, that we are here for all kids. And that begins with our district schools that do have and will continue to serve the vast majority of our kids. So I think that that responds to our first couple speakers, and there was, there was some comments about what the district is doing or is not doing. And again, whether it was you, Ms. Luke Borelli, or Mr. Zahn, I do believe that we have worked incredibly hard to improve curriculum, to provide as much staffing support as humanly possible, but the issues around substitutes continues to be a challenge for us, and that has always been a challenge. That wasn't a challenge that just came up on my watch. To Mr. Blake, your comment was about how we can articulate these announcements when all five schools are in the same neighborhood, I believe was your specific comment. These five schools are actually not all in the same neighborhood unless your category's in Camden is one neighborhood, but each school with the exception of East Camden and McGraw is in a unique neighborhood. And East Camden and McGraw are, have different grade levels, so all schools are actually situated in unique neighborhoods. Mr. Elizabeth Delgado, we certainly agree with you in terms of the challenges we're facing with special education students, and, you know, I do believe that we're making some progress there, it's not where we want to be. And last year during the budget process, in spite of the challenges that we inherited, not a single staff member that was in a special education position was impacted for a reason because we need to continue to support those students and we need to continue doing all that we can for them. For the teacher Whittier, Ms. Mio, I mean, you made the comment about how many capital projects the district has approved. Let me go back to my original comments as far as not pointing the finger and the fact that this is a systemic failure. Here's what I mean when I say systemic failure. And this is an unfortunate truth, but when it comes to facilities repairs, there are two sources prior to partnership with Renaissance schools. The two sources are, first is the School Development Authority. The School Development Authority recently floated, not recently, in the past couple of years, floated bonds to be able to build new buildings and to renovate existing buildings. That number is somewhere around three hundred million dollars. And there have been some state budget challenges with bonds being downgraded and so forth, which limited their ability to raise bonds at an affordable cost. So three hundred million dollars is again roughly the size of the pot. And what they do is they prioritize construction in districts that are first overcrowded. So buildings where literally you can't fit in another student, they need to build new buildings. So school districts like Camden, by design, are shortchanged because most of our buildings are underpopulated. So there's problem number one. Problem number two is, that total sum of money doesn't come anywhere close to what the state's needs are. So Camden High, we fought like crazy, again, to those that believe we're disadvantaging our traditional public schools, we fought like crazy to get at least fifty million dollars. And I think that number is gonna be far, far above fifty million dollars to renovate Camden High. So subtract a little bit more than fifty million dollars or seventy, eighty million dollars, whatever that project ends up costing, from that overall three hundred, three hundred fifty million dollars, that's what's left over for the rest of the state, not just for Camden, for the rest of the state. So we are then left with a structural shortcoming. Second source of funds is that we could float bonds here locally. We can float bonds here locally, but that means you have to have a large enough tax levy. Our tax levy, and we're gonna go through this in our budget, is seven and a half million dollars on a three hundred fifty million dollar budget. That is two percent of our budget. We cannot meaningfully float bonds and do meaningful construction when we have a small tax levy. Most of our funds come from the rest of the state, the rest of the taxpayers, to subsidize education in Camden. And I think that's important because Camden does deserve those additional resources, but it does mean that our hands are tied when it comes to capital projects. So with Renaissance schools, they have an ability to use the free markets unlike the bureaucracy, unlike traditional public schools. And that's a good outcome for children and for families. And we should understand that to be, again, part of a structural shortcoming, a structural failure, systemic failure, but again, it presents us an opportunity where we can provide these five schools a fresh start in school buildings that are crumbling, to do right by our kids. And as you heard our last speaker, Mr. Morton, say, we have had a graduation rate that is unacceptable for decades. And you can blame our efforts here in the last eighteen months, but the last eighteen months didn't put us where we are. And I hope we can all agree we need to move forward with a sense of urgency and that's why we've made these decisions. Ms. Ragsdale, you raised a number of very good, insightful questions, I'm gonna do my best to respond to each of them. So for transportation students of Whittier, we will be working with the Kip School to ensure that there is courtesy bussing for some of the students who do not live close to Landing Square. A lot of the students at Whittier, and as we've looked at, you know, where the students actually attend, the majority of them are actually closer to the Landing Square community than they are in the Whittier community. And so, the ones that happen to be a little bit further away, we're gonna work to ensure that they have transportation. You asked if we're downsizing administration. You might remember last year, we cut the administrative staff by fifty percent, a little under fifty percent. So we've taken pretty draconian cuts in the central office, and yes, the short answer is we will continue to make cuts to make sure that we push resources out to the school level. You asked about monetizing schools in terms of, are we, are we getting any revenue? By law, per Urban Hope Act, it can only be a nominal rate. So whether we do a long-term lease or whether we sell the buildings themselves, a nominal rate by definition, by statute, would be nominal, it'd be a dollar. So there's no revenue generation from this, and these are nonprofit organizations, every last penny goes into the schools. So whatever they're not spending on their school building, it benefits kids, and I think that's a fair, that's a fair system. You asked, what happens if Renaissance schools struggle or fail? So Renaissance schools are like charter schools where there is real accountability. And as you likely know here in Camden, two charter schools were closed last year because they weren't getting the job done. And the same thing would happen with Renaissance schools. And we've taken a wait-and-see approach here, and here in year one, we've seen some real signs of progress for the Renaissance schools, they're off to a great start, you heard from some satisfied parents here in this room. And we're very optimistic that these schools are gonna be successful, but to the extent they're not, then yes, we as a district would then serve those students, but we are, again, Ms. White, I did want to just quickly also mention, in the Credo Report, you highlighted a comment about charter schools. That same Credo Report talks about uncommon in Kip as being two of the most successful charter management organizations in the state that significantly decrease the achievement gap. They didn't comment on Mastery because it wasn't a part of the New Jersey study. Okay. Okay, Mr. Christopher. I believe I've responded to most of your comments. Uh, Mr. Farmer, you know, we'd be happy to take that conversation offline in terms of you felt somewhat surprised by the decisions, but I do believe you attended a number of the town halls and we've had a number of conversations about the nature of the decisions. To Ms. Connie Visante, you asked, do Renaissance schools have the right to unionize? So New Jersey is a, is a non-right-to-work state. All public employees have a right to unionize and that is certainly the case for Renaissance schools. Whether they choose to unionize or not is up to the teachers themselves. Ms. Sarah Josh, a number, uh, you wanted to know the number of students that are enrolled in impacted schools. So for the grade levels of the impacted schools that would potentially move over to Renaissance schools, that number is roughly, uh, 1,100, roughly 1,100 students. I'm gonna go through it in the budget presentation as well. Uh, but ultimately, in each of those schools, in each of those neighborhoods, so for example, at Whittier, if a parent doesn't want to send their child to the new Kip Cooper, Kip, Kip school down, you know, in that same neighborhood, they can certainly look at Wiggins. Uh, so for each of these, they will have choice in the matter. Uh, but that is a potential number in terms of at the impacted schools. The existing Renaissance schools will also continue to grow and that is roughly another 400 students. You asked for a map of the catchment areas. We actually shared those out a couple board meetings ago and would be happy to share with you, um, um, the copies of the catchment area maps. You asked, what if there isn't enough space at these schools? Depending upon how the students make choices, most, I mean, every one of these schools is actually under-enrolled. So we don't anticipate space being a concern, but if there is enough space, we will look at the next neighborhood school available. You asked about... You asked if any of the board members have a conflict of interest? No. We are not aware of any conflicts of interest. And if there are any conflicts of interest, the board members themselves will certainly make, make us aware, but we do not see any conflicts of interest. Uh, Michelle Martinez, you asked about training for technology. Uh, I'll use Park as an example. We've been tremendously successful with the implementation of Park thanks to the support of our lead educators and our technology team. We've had all the devices ready to go in each of our classrooms, in each of our schools. We purchased 2,300 new laptops this year and certainly that helped with the implementation of Park. And I do believe that the training has been sufficient. Mr. Warren, you commented about a high rate of special ed and ELLs at Woodrow Wilson and how, when you have a high concentration of needy students, how we're assessing schools. So let me just say this. We don't just look at proficiency. We don't just look at test scores for that matter. We look at a number of other factors, including school culture and climate, how are parents feeling, how are students feeling, but also progress. We look at where kids come in and where they are when they leave. And we compare that to similar students in other parts of the city and other parts of the state. So we don't penalize schools for having high concentration of needy students. Although the reality is, the vast majority of schools in Camden have high concentration of students that are, whose families qualify for free lunch, who have an IEP or, or English language learners. So I don't always buy this argument that, you know, some schools have it easier than others. I mean, the reality is, most every single school in Camden is serving, uh, you know, they're serving students that are in great need. And our responsibility is to make sure every single one of them shows the progress, ultimately, to be able to graduate from our school system, prepare for college, or prepared to build a meaningful career. And that's the hard work we do day in and day out. And the decisions we made, there's been some criticism that all we did was compare the test scores to the rest of the state. That's nonsense. That's absolute nonsense. We looked at student growth percentiles, which fairly tracks where kids come in, vis-à-vis other similar, um, students throughout the rest of the city and state and how they're doing when they leave those schools. And the reality is, for those five schools, we're not seeing enough progress. And so at a school like Molina, where only 7% of the students, just looking at proficiency right now, 7% of the students are on grade level in reading and in math per the NJASK and on top of that, are not seeing the progress that we would like them to see, that's a problem. Now, I'm not saying that's the teacher's fault. In fact, that's the last thing I'm saying. I've told so many of you all, some of the best teachers I've ever observed are in this school district, like Ms. Emily Vosser at the Wiggins School, who's phenomenal, first grade teacher, phenomenal. But that's not to say that we don't have challenges. And you've heard that from a number of the speakers today, that we need to do a lot more work in order to raise the bar in every single classroom. Last couple of comments here. Ms. Cream, you made a comment about the public process. Uh, happy to take this offline in terms of the notes we've taken at these various public meetings, but the bottom line is, we've now held over 45 public meetings. A wide variety of different Camden community members have joined, whether they're parents of district schools, charter schools, or Renaissance schools, or just interested community members. And sometimes we get even non-Chamden residents who show up and voice their opinion. I've talked to every last one of them. I've been as transparent as we possibly could have been for those who are saying that this news blindsided them. The fact that we wanted to transform at least three schools was a goal in our Camden commitment released over a year ago. So for anyone that is claiming that this news caught them off guard, they haven't been paying close attention to our work because we have been incredibly clear, incredibly transparent about the potential decisions we're gonna make and stated so even more clearly during the recent town halls. And with, uh, Mr. Mongalisa's, uh, Davis's comments about the Oprah request, we are processing the Oprah request and we'll get that back to you soon. As far as your comments about the Cream School, let's take that offline. That is not my understanding. Those kids are now well situated, given a very unfortunate situation that happened there with the, um, uh, there was a, for those who don't know, uh, a sprinkler burst which triggered a fire pump, 60,000 gallons of water flowed through the building. It is inoperable and thanks to three of our existing schools, we have taken those kids in and we've done so thanks to tremendously hard, uh, hardworking staff members to ensure that they're all in, in a warm, nurturing learning environment every single day. And we're hopeful that Cream will be up and running before the end of the school year. Uh, so our insurance funds kicked in and we're doing that work right now, thanks to the hard work of our facility staff. And we, we are hopeful that Cream will be back up and running by the end of this school year.
All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Meeting's adjourned.
You've been watching the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education. Join us next month for the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education.